We can new and New Hope people. As well as donations, we honor our relationship with the nations. This meeting is being called to order at 2:36 on September 22nd, 2025. This meeting is being recorded and recording will be made publicly available on our website. So I'm just going to do a quick little roll call of our directors that are in attendance. We have Director Steve Emery representing Area A, Director Travis Hall representing Area B, myself Jamie Kennedy representing Area C. I'm hoping that Lawrence Northeast will be joining us representing Area D and we have Director Leslie Harstead representing Area E. Hello. First off is the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a mover to adopt the agenda as presented? Or is there anything that we need to add? Oh, moved by Director Hall and a secondary. Yeah. Oh, look who it is. And did I have a secondary with Steve? Did you second?
Sure.
Okay, seconded by Director Emery. Any further discussion there? All in favor? Great. Okay, perfect. Next, we have the adoption or the minutes, the adoption of the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at the minutes there? So this is the July minutes. So I am just looking for a motion to adopt the minutes as presented. Moved by Director Harstead and a secondary. Seconded by Director Emery. Any further discussion on the July minutes? All in favor?
Right.
Great, great. Okay, so next we have the minutes for the special board meeting for September 10th. Any comments, questions, changes for those ones? Looking for a motion that the minutes be adopted as presented.
Yep.
Director Northeast, thank you very much. And a secondary? Director Harstead, perfect. Any further discussion there? All in favor? Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so moving right into executive reports. I will begin as your chair. I'm going to keep it really brief just due to technology and all of that. Joining you from UBCM here in Victoria. It's a beautiful day here in Victoria. I am yeah, feeling really grateful to be able to be here to represent our region and to have a few meetings with ministers while we're down here and do some connecting with other local government leaders. Yeah, I'm always so grateful for our time down here at UBCM. So I will, yeah, I'll just pass it right along to Director Emery with Area A.
Nothing too new to report. The tourism season seemed to come to a screeching halt and it's pretty quiet around here now.
Yeah, all of a sudden. Yep. All right, great. Director Hall, Area B.
Yeah, not too much to say either. Just we're still experiencing some pretty devastating losses in the village. There was a search that's still going on. It's really difficult to kind of pull away from that one. It's somebody who's so close to us and was such a kind person. But other than that, there's lots of development going on with me personally and the fishing and commercial seafood licensing. But yeah, I'm getting over those flu and cold and abscess and stuff. I'm finally getting energy. I'm finally kind of waking up. It's a really tough time. And it made it real difficult to attend all the community events and stuff in the village when you're not comfortable. Because you have a giant throat. Anyway, if I can think more later, I'll consider adding it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Director Hall. Thank you very much. Director Northeast, hello. Good to see you.
Hey there. Thank you. Good to be seen. Good to be here. I'm once again indebted to Meg's expertise. I don't know what's going on with my technology. I got on, I got up this morning, made sure everything was working. I like to do things off my laptop and my tablet. And it was all working fine and I went to actually log in and the teams decided to get snarky with me. So we'll sit down later on this week, her and I, and try and figure it out because quite frankly, it's making me old beyond my years when I get this type of stress in the morning. I don't have much to report except that I attended an NDIT meeting where we Northwest Representatives Meeting where we discussed the distribution of about a half a million dollars worth of grant money to community groups. I can't say specifically because that was Friday and I don't know if the groups have been contacted yet, but one of our local groups was or is the recipient of one of the one of the three grants from the Bella Kula Valley that was applied for. So that's good news and I wish I could say what it is because it's kind of cool, but I can't. So and that's it. Looking forward to a good meeting today and if something else pops up, I like Director Hall will just chime in when it's appropriate. So thank you, everybody.
Excellent. Thank you, Director Northeast. And we miss you here in Victoria.
I miss it too.
Director Harstead, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Yeah, not too much to report either. I'll just keep it short, but just look thinking about the 2026 budget and that kind of stuff. And reiterating something that Director Northeast mentioned last time was I'm thinking about fiscally prudent decisions over the next year. Of course, we always have difficulties with our with finances and taxes and all that stuff in Bella Kula, such a small community and tax base. So yeah, I'm hoping that we can continue to make positive decisions for the taxpayers.
Thank you very much. Wonderful. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, everybody. Moving right into financial services. Item 5.1 is a signatory change of authorized signatures. So pretty standard. Does anyone have any questions about this change? I'm looking for a motion that Jennifer Frank, former accountant, be removed from the list of authorized signatories for the accounts of the Central Coast Regional District and the Central Coast Regional Hospital District. Moved by Director Emery, seconded by Director Harstead. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Great. Thanks, you guys. Great. Next, we have the 5.2, the information report. So pardon me, on the service satisfaction report. So we've received the information on the results of the 2025 Service Satisfaction Survey. Does anyone have any comments or questions about that item? Director Harstead?
Oh, just to say that, you know, it's always interesting and good to receive feedback from the community and you know, I think keeping in touch with the community and keeping everybody updated is sounds like the thing that's still on the top of people's minds. So yeah. So that was good. Yeah.
Yeah, great. Thank you. I agree. It's yeah, good to get if you get the pulse of what's going on out there and yeah, hear what the concerns are. We are listening. Sometimes it's hard to meet those, you know, the expectations of service as well as the, you know, challenges that we face with taxation and fees. So yeah, I hear you. It's good to hear feedback from residents. Any other questions, comments? All right. Next is the administrative update. Mr. Slingel, can you run us through that one, please?
Hi Chair Kennedy, absolutely. So just provide a brief overview and kind of where things, what we've been working on. So the corporate administration team has really been working towards supporting the directors and their advocacy efforts towards UBCM. We've onboarded a new corporate officer as well as we're working on updating a fair amount of agreements. The finance team has been working quite extensively this last little bit as we've been getting everything from, you know, water charges out the door as well as dealing with preparations for the 2026 budget. And as well, we've had some fire and emergency management related related events that does have an impact on the finance team. Other than that, we've got some general updates around everything from solid waste to parks and recreation. The big thing is that there are some updates both on this agenda as well as in this report in regards to the water service and the water capital projects. So you have had three requests for new service and then some support requests for identifying curb stops. And our staff are going through some operators training and the capital project with the Hagensburg Water System is nearing completion. And right now we are reporting a boil water notification on the Bella Kula Townsite. I've been working with the nation and Make Up For Coastal Health on remedying that. So we'll see how, please keep an eye on social media and our website for official announcements. And the Centennial Pool is also nearing completion. So we're hoping to have get it all wrapped up and then we can kind of look at opening it up for a bit of a tour for the directors and then something for the public. So we're just kind of getting along there. And then if we dive into the emergency management side of things, you can see that it has been an exceptionally busy period of time from everything from we've had a tsunami advisory. I think we've also had one, one big one that had us a bit worried. And then there's been another one or two in that period of time that have come back pretty quick, no threat to PC, but it's still for a moment when you get those things. Everybody has a moment. Other than that, we've had a fair amount of fires around the Chaco that has an impact on the tourism sector as well as making sure that we get the appropriate amount of supplies into the community. So it has been a very busy period of time for administration over the last month and a bit.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments for CEO? On the administrative report? All right. Yeah, it sounds like everybody's been really busy. It's great to hear. Oh, did I hear a question? Yes, yes. Director Northeast, did you have a question?
Oh, no, I was agreeing. Just
Oh, good. Okay.
Just nodding.
Yes. Yeah, no, it's everybody's been really busy. It's really great to see some of these projects that have been, you know, a long time in, a long time coming, starting to get into the final stages. So exciting. So wonderful. And thank you, a huge thank you to staff and to everybody who's working hard on on all those pieces. Okay, so next we have received an information report on with an update on the progress at the airport. Does anyone have any questions regarding that report? All right, so if I am hearing none, we can move right along. Then now we have a request for decision. This is item 7.2 on the request from the New Hope Nation for a landfill waiver on the foreshore cleanup. I'm, oh, here we are. Perfect. Oh, that's the, yeah, the airport one. Does anyone have any questions on the airport piece? Nope. Okay, so we are, yeah, looking at this request for decision here to waive the landfill fees for up to $500 for the foreshore cleanup from the New Hope Nation. So I'm looking for either, yeah, questions or comments or a motion that a fee waiver up to the amount of $500 in landfill fees be authorized for the New Hope Nation Nations foreshore cleanup.
Yeah, I'd like to just make a motion to that effect to
Sure.
Yeah.
Moved by Director Northeast and a secondary?
Also.
Seconded by Director Hall. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I thought.
Great. Thanks, you guys. So next we have an update and a request for decision on the Hagensburg Water System Improvement. Oh, Mr. Manson. Oh, hello. Yes.
Madam Chair, if I may jump in real quick. Unfortunately, that vote is a service participant vote. So Director Hall.
Oh, come on. I was wondering about that, but yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it is. So it'll be between Chair Kennedy, Director Harstead and Director Northeast. My apologies.
Okay, no problem. Sorry, my apologies. Yeah, I was, we were on such a roll. We were doing go, we've been right along. So I've got secondary Director Harstead there. Is that, yes, thank you very much. And further discussion? All in favor? Great. Thank you very much. Perfect. So now we have the Hagensburg Water System Improvements Phase One Project Update. And is it true? Do I have Mr. Manson here with us today?
He's there. He just needs to unmute himself.
Okay. Oh. I thought I heard him maybe a little bit.
Oh, no.
Uh-oh.
Is that good?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Sorry. I think the technical problems are spreading. I don't know. Sorry. Yes, yeah. I think the report is pretty well self-explanatory. We are reaching the the end of our construction period. The reservoir is in a process of being erected. Now the foundation work is done. So the steel work in the reservoir is going to start climbing into the sky. That'll take about two or three weeks. The treatment plant building is complete. The most of the hardware in the building is complete. And we're kind of waiting on the completion of the reservoir structure in order to turn on the wells and start moving some of our new water source through the system. In which case we'll be, the team will come up and do our commissioning and those kind of tests and whatnot in the reservoir pressure testing and things like that. And then we will, at that point, we need to disinfect the the treatment process itself and the piping and the reservoir. And then at that point, at the completion of that with the completion of the disinfection and the testing, then at that point, we will have a new water source that we can start to use. And at that point, the plan is to start a fairly comprehensive flushing program. It's outlined in the report there where we're going to start moving that new water through the system and getting as much of the organics that have accumulated in the system over the years, get it out of the system so we can basically clean up the distribution system before we start putting any disinfection into the distribution system. So that's kind of the, the plan of attack. It will occur over the fall. I don't think we'll reach the end of that flushing. Probably it'll be sometime in November before we've completed that part of the work. So that's kind of the, the next steps coming up. On the financial side, I would report, just since I wrote the report, that we do we have received one of the two invoices that we're going to be getting for the tariffs for that reservoir, unfortunately. First one came in at 25 for the roof structure and then the sides, there'll be a separate invoice for that. So we do have that financial pressure I was mentioning in the report about that additional cost that really wasn't part of our budgeting because as you all know, this all occurred after, after we attended the project. And you should see some nice photographs in the report there. You could see the completion of the treatment plant building, which is located just up the road from the, from the fire hall and the reservoir, of course, which is up pretty well at the same elevation. It's a little bit higher than the intake at the creek there. That's, that's my report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thanks for the, the report. Any questions for Mr. Manson here? Director Emery, go ahead.
So we're looking for 100 grand from the Asset Replacement Reserve Fund. Is that, is that money that was allocated to the asset replacement of the water system? Or is it coming out of a general that everyone's asset replacement is account?
I think I can, I can answer for that. It's a allocated allocated account from the Hagensburg Local Area Service.
And I also saw Ms. Bian's hand as well. Ms. Bian, did you want to add anything to that?
Yes, Madam Chair, yeah. Just regarding respect to Asset Replacement Fund, the way our bylaw structure is by service by services. So every single one of Asset Replacement Reserve Fund actually separated by services and then more approve each services side by side with the, along with the entire budget through the financial planning, just for everybody's information.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, so, oh, yes, Director Harstead, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just wondering the other than, I guess, the other than the tariff part, but are those other potential costs, are they not, yeah, the hydro costs and commissioning costs? Are they not, were they not, didn't they form part of the original contract? Like, I'm just wondering why this CCRD would need to be absorbing those costs at this point?
Yeah, the hydro cost is always a cost that the owner pays. We have to go into the hydro system and request an amendment or an addition to our service there. They had to put a new service in, a three-phase service. So we're treated as a customer and the way they work, they give preliminary estimates and then they go and do, you give them basically a deposit and then they go and do the work and then they charge you whatever costs to do their work. So they have work to do. They need to come out to the site and run, run wires and bring the physical wires in through the system. So those are difficult costs to to account for. We do our best at the beginning to estimate the cost, but we think this one is going to be coming in a little bit higher. But I think the biggest cost, of course, overrun here is the, is the tariff that we really didn't know about until, until June.
And that original, and sorry, what was the amount that you said you got, you received? You received a
Yeah, we, yes, we received the first bill of two and it's for 25. So they are estimating and they did the percentage. It's a, I think it's 25%. And they estimate it's going to be 60,000. So there'll be another substantial bill to come in at 35 or so.
It just seems funny with the hydro one because usually you, you know, you get a quote from hydro and that's, that's what they, they work to.
Yeah, usually.
So we didn't, so we didn't get a quote then?
Well, we, the engineers estimated what they thought the connection cost was and it was a little more difficult.
Yeah, right. So they didn't talk to them and they just did, yeah, okay, they just guessed.
There, there's a very, you know, there's a, there's quite just a process. You have to go with them and you sometimes you can't get the designers to commit until later in the process and et cetera. But we did have a number at the beginning of the project, but it ended up to be more extensive than they had originally estimated.
Okay, thank you. And, oh, Director Harstead, go ahead.
I'm just wondering. I, we have a bill now, but I'm just wondering if we can still wait until the final costs before we make a final decision to transfer some money. Yeah, I'm not sure when the bill's due and payable, but
We're going to say, we're going to say that, we're going to say we can spend up to that amount of money, isn't it?
Can we see the wording of that again? Yeah, to, to cover potential additional
Reallocation.
So yeah, my concern is if, if we don't, and like there's a month between meetings, that that may be a challenge if that bill, I mean, I don't know when that bill comes due. Go ahead, Mr. Slingel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With the, with the way the project will wrap up and be completed, any funds remaining will come back before the board for reallocation to the reserve. So it's not like if the money, if you have the money and it gets allocated, it goes off to things. It pays for the project and at the end, when we come back to the board with a full financial review of the project where it landed and what's going on, any funds left over will be eligible for, for being placed back into the reserve.
So if we said that the reallocation of, of, of up to $117,000, then that could be taken out as, as it was needed, or is it better to take one big lump out?
For flexibility, I think, I think the project staff would, would prefer the whole amount being removed. Then we can kind of handle things as, as things come up. And then, as I said, we'll return to the board with how, how did everything land? Where did all the funds go? And then any funds remaining, the board can reallocate to the reserve.
Okay. Okay, so yeah, any other questions or comments on the report or the reallocation of funds? So I'm just looking for the motion that that the reallocation of 117,324 from the Asset Replacement Reserve Fund to the Hagensburg Water System Improvement Project to cover potential additional projects, project costs be authorized. Moved by Director Northeast and a secondary? So this is a number, is this for this everybody?
All directors.
All directors. Okay, so Director Northeast moves and I'm looking for a secondary. Okay. So if we don't approve it, then that could be a challenge. I'm just wondering if we decide not to approve.
All second, all second.
Okay, seconded by Director Emery.
I thought the system froze for a second there.
But out of curiosity, like, Mr. Slingel, if we were to not approve the the reallocation of the funds, like, I mean, what happens then? You know, if we don't pay for those things, the tariffs and the connection to the hydro and those things? It doesn't seem like that would be very good.
Madam Chair, we've, we've tried to keep the participants abreast of these matters and I sent an email out in the summer, just kind of getting you know, saying that, hey, we're seeing these, these pressures and these pressures are coming. So, you know, these are the challenges of, you know, us being caught in the middle of a trade war trying to do a capital project sort of thing. So we do need the funds to, to pay for these unexpected expenses.
Okay, so I have a mover. I have a secondary. Any further discussion?
What, one question? Who, who are we, who are we actually paying the tariff money to?
Yeah, it's a bit of a, a convoluted thing because the,
Uh-huh.
It comes through the contract, comes through the contractor. And under the contract, um, they have a subcontractor delivering the reservoir, providing the reservoir, including the labor to put it together. So the, the bill, actually, the subcontractor gets it. But under the terms of, uh, of the contract, this would be considered an extra. And then the main contractor has already told us he's not going. Normally, they're allowed to put an overhead, um, amount on it and send the bill to us with a administration, uh, cost added. And he's not going to be doing that because, um, he didn't think it was the right thing to do. So our bill will, um, I've been told our bill will be whatever the subcontractor's bill is going to be in terms of the tariff and nothing else.
And are, and are these contractors American or Canadian?
They're Canadian.
Except for the truck driver importer guy.
Yeah, well, I don't know whether who, whether they came down from Canada or the other way around. Yeah.
Yeah, but, but the parts are coming from the United States, I guess, the.
Yeah, unfortunately, the, you know, the market is the way the market is and steel reservoirs tend to come from the States. I don't, we didn't, we didn't, I was told there weren't any Canadian equivalents. Maybe in 10 years' time, there might be, but there wasn't the time.
Right, okay, thank you.
I would like to add that the, the roof is made of aluminum and I'll, and I'll bet you the aluminum came from Canada originally, but that's a whole other matter.
That's great.
Yeah, but if that's the case, then we shouldn't be paying tariffs on it.
Well, apparently that's the way it works, but.
Yeah, because it's work, it's because we're not directly involved with it. It might be different if, if the regional board was asking the questions to the federal government instead of some contractor. The contractor doesn't, isn't really on, isn't really having any incentive to, to try to negotiate or explain what's going on, other than he just wants his money to pay and then, uh, carry on with the project. He doesn't really care.
We are through the main contractor, we are, look, there is a, um, a program where you can potentially get a refund. It is act, for whatever reason, I've been advised it's not, government, local governments are not allowed to apply, but, but private contractors can, and an application has been made. So there is a possibility that we might, uh, get this tariff refunded, but it probably won't be for a number of months if that's the case.
Mm-hmm.
But it has been applied for, they did it on our behalf.
Thank you. Yeah, it doesn't sound like something that's like, yeah, within, within our control as far as like, what we're able to, yeah. Um, at the governance level.
It's kind of a weird deal because I thought they got rid of all the tariffs. I thought that's what Carney did there, you know, a month ago.
It came over the border at the end of July and that's when it gets assessed.
Oh, yeah, so just missed out on the getting canceled part.
Well, I'm not sure it has. I, I think the steel is still, aluminum is still on.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Okay, so anyways, we just, we need to do a vote. Um, we have a mover, we have a seconder, um, all in favor?
Aight.
Yeah, great. Okay, thanks, you guys. Um, okay, next is the Centennial Pool Project Update, which is moving along. Um, does anyone have any questions about this report?
None for me. I'm just happy to see things moving along. It's getting exciting.
I know, so exciting. That's great. Yeah, this is a great report, all good stuff. And, um, yeah, so exciting to see, it looked like a swimming pool. It looks like a swimming pool. So exciting.
And I can, um, I can add that the, the, the pool, which you know is steel, did not come from the States. There's no tariffs on that thing. It came at the beginning of the year anyways, but.
Yeah, we've got to take these wins, right? This is, that's great. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manson. I really appreciate it. Yeah, that's, uh.
I would, perhaps I'll just comment a little bit on the financials. The, um, this project was, um, um, was, it was another one that had a very tight budget. Uh, the Hagensburg one, we, if you go back and read my report from last fall, we actually had no contingency for that project. So, um, I think we've done pretty well considering the, uh, uh, the size of the project and, and bringing it in within 1% of the, uh, of the original, uh, tendered amount or, uh, the amount that we had budgeted for costs. Um, Centennial Pool, we did have a small contingency, about a 5% contingency. We are working through that right now, um, with the contractor as we finalize, uh, some of the details of the pool. Um, where also, we've had some discussions with the, um, the pool committee on potentially, um, bringing in some equipment to help in children's programs. And we'll be looking at that over the next month or two to see if we have any money left over, what kind of recommendations we might be bringing forward to, uh, allocating it, um, between now and the, and the opening of the pool next spring. So stay tuned for that.
Good. Thank you, John.
Yes, great news. Thank you very much. Sorry, I was muted there. And then thank you for these reports and, um, yeah, running through them with us. Any other questions for, about the pool? All right, next, um, we have the, uh, we're moving into economic development and, uh, we have the, uh, UBCM Active Transportation Grant. Um, this is 8.1. Um, Ms. Bystad, can you, uh, hello, by the way? And, uh, can you run us through this, uh, report, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair, Directors. Uh, and I hope you guys are having good weather in Vancouver because it's raining up here. So, um, the, uh, report before you is for the Active Transportation Grant for UBCM. This is a planning grant, um, similar to some of the others that I've brought forward, um, in which, um, we need to apply for the planning portion of it before we can apply for the implementation portion of it. So this is, is, uh, for that planning portion of Act, Active Transportation. Um, this project I've added on, um, uh, in 2009, I make reference, um, to it in the report. There was, there was a report done on the Four Mile to Belacoola. Um, it was actually for, at the time, it was a really well-done report and, and very well-supported and, and received by the community. Um, so this, applying for the Active Transportation Planning Grant also gives us the opportunity to update that particular report so that at the end of it, we'll have our planning, um, program, but we'll also have a shovel-ready component within the Four Mile Belacoola Strip. Um, so, um, so it's kind of a, a two-parter request here, um, in that looking for, um, uh, support for the, for the planning grant and then support for, um, uh, the 10,000 to come from the reserve that we can put towards the planning to get the shovel ready, um, uh, Four Mile to Belacoola report done. If that makes sense.
Yeah.
Questions from the board?
We, we might want to, we might want to look into that a little bit more of the, before we spend or ask for money to re, revisit the trail from Four Mile to the Belacoola because, um, you know, this was done before, Hans Granatter, uh, did the report, I believe. And, and, and there was a lot of planning involved with that. And I, and it didn't go anywhere and there was a reason for it. And I'm, and I can't remember if it was, if it was a, um, uh, a nation-related issue or it was decided at the time that, uh, that because it goes, it was supposed to go through the swamp, um, that, um, it was, it was, I think it was deemed that maybe, um, if we can tag along with, um, when the band eventually puts, uh, sewer line down that way, that, um, that, that sewer line would also, on top, would be the, would be the trail.
I, I have had some considerable discussions, um, with the New Hawk Economic Development Director and a couple, um, members of their resource, uh, committee. They are fully in favor of, um, of this project and are interested in participating with us on it, um, if we're successful in the grant. Um, so that the Four Mile to Belacoola is something that they're very interested in at this time. And I agree, the final, um, route of the trail, um, will probably be just different than what's in that original report. Um, but, um, I think that, um, it's, there's something, it, it, there's something here that I think that, that the parties are interested in and coming together on.
Sure, no, that makes sense. And, you know, and it, and if it is, if it is out through the swamp, kind of like down that way, that, um, it, maybe it's, um, it, it would also be, uh, uh, an, an emergency route around where the landslides always happen or the trees and all that stuff.
Mm-hmm. Um, other questions or comments for Spicedad? Uh, Director Harsted, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's, um, with this grant, um, is there any portion, uh, that the, um, CCRD will end up having to pay for? Administrative-wise or otherwise?
The, um, the CCRD, um, generally provides administrative oversight. So that's basically staff costs in terms of, of managing it. Um, but at this time, we're not asking for any, um, additional funds from the CCRD. For the, for the planning grant.
Okay.
Other than the $10,000.
Other than the $10,000, yes.
Great. Yeah, any other questions or comments here? Okay, so I am looking for a motion that the.
Pick me.
Oh, Steve. Oh, you have a question or you want to be the first one to make?
I will all be the first in line.
Okay, great. I love it. I love your enthusiasm. Um, yeah, can I do these two together or do I have to do them as two separate resolutions?
That might be a curious question, but I think because the weighting is different, they need to be different resolutions.
Oh, yes, okay, then they do. Okay, thank you. Thanks for catching that. Um, yes. Okay, so we're on the first one. The, um, Director Emery has moved to the first resolution. I'm looking for a seconder. Seconded by Director Northeast. Any further discussion there? All in favor? Great, thank you very much. And the second one, that additional funds of $10,000 for the application be authorized from the Economic Development Function and that on successful receipt of the grant funding, the Chief Financial Officer be authorized to execute the agreement and administer the program.
I can do that.
Moved by Director Northeast and a seconder. Seconded by Director Harsted. Any further discussion? All in favor? Great. Yeah, this sounds really exciting. This is great. Thank you very much, uh, for the report and I look forward to hearing how, how it goes.
I'll be, I'll be announcing it from the, uh, from, from the rooftops.
Yeah. That's great. Okay, perfect. Um, so, yeah, next we, we're moving on to the Business Facade Improvement Grant real, allocation. Um, yeah, do, does anyone have any questions about this one or do we want to speak to this one quickly?
I can, I can speak to this quickly. Um, I, part of, um, part of the, um, Business Facade Improvement Grant is that now that we've applied for it this year, we'll be applying for it every year. So, um, we, we sort of get into a rotation of that. So there are communities, Williams Lake, um, you know, Quinell, uh, the CCRD, who have been receiving this grant for in excess of 10 years. So, yeah, so once you, once we start to sort of get into that rhythm, um, this, this will, we have to reapply for it every year. Um, but we should then sort of, it becomes part of what we do economic, from an economic development perspective. The, the trick with this grant is that it's 20,000 every year. And if you only spend 15,000, they let you keep the 5,000, but it means that next year you can only apply up to 15,000. So whatever happens, you're always maxed out at that 20,000. So of course, we want to spend as much of that 20,000 every year that we can. So that's what this application is about. We've had, one of the businesses that was approved, um, has had some health issues. So they're interested in reapplying next year. Um, you know, potentially after we're successful with the application to NDIS next year. So they'll, they've, um, they've agreed to reapply next year if we're successful. That leaves then their $3,009 available for reallocation this year so that we can maximize spending as much of the 20,000 as we can. Um, so what we've done is recommended, um, the redistribution to the three applications that, um, when the initial, uh, ranking was done, the three that ranked as the top three, um, to use up that $3,009.
Great. Questions or comments here? Hearing none? All right, so I'm just looking for a resolution that the redistribution of available grant funding for the amounts listed, uh, be supported in order to fully allocate the funding from NDIS, from the NDIS Business Facade Improvement Grant. Moved by Director Harsted and a seconder. Seconded by Director Northeast. Any further discussion? All in favor? Great. Um, that's great. Yeah, it's really exciting to see that those funds being, being used and we've, yeah, been able to, to see that, so those improvements being made. Um, and, yeah, it's, it's great that we can continue to raise awareness about this fund so that other businesses can take advantage of it and hopefully on the outer coast as well, um, next year too. Great. Um, okay, so the, um, notice has been given for the variance permit and no comments have been received. I believe that the applicant is here. Um, I think I saw, uh, Ms. Gunderson's name come up on the zoo, on the teams there. And, um, while we get sorted and get your, um, give you speaking privileges, if you'd like to say anything, I can give you a few moments if you would like to address the board at all? Okay, so we are, um, bringing the meeting back to order at 3:33. Um, we are on item 8.3, the request for decision, the, um, Development Variance Permit Number 2025 dash one. Um, so I would like to give the applicant a chance to speak to the permit or the application. And, um, Mr. Pat Gunderson is here to speak with us. So I'll give you the, the floor, Pat. It's all yours.
Yeah, thank you very much, Jamie. Um, yeah, I think the, the reason we kind of applied for this variant, um, variance was because on the original application for subdivision, um, the Ministry of Highways and the original PLR, um, got direction from CCRD with either two options for water. One was connect to the Hagensburg Water System, um, or provide approved groundwater system. So back at the, back at the time of application, uh, we weren't able to, to connect to Hagensburg Water System, um, because of the boil-up water advisory. So we put a well on that lot and provided water that way. And, um, it's an approved water system. So later on, the, the bylaw number one came up. Um, but at the time of approval and, you know, when we were kind of processing the lot, there was no mention of the bylaw number one. So that's kind of the, why we're applying for the variance.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
So, any questions? I'd be happy to, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, absolutely. Does any, do any of the board members have any questions for Mr. Gunderson at this time? Hearing none. Um, I'm also, uh, now I'm going to ask if there's anyone present who would like to, uh, speak on the variance, um, to be heard on this permit? All right, so I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing any hands for anyone to speak in favor or in opposition. So would, is there, um, if, if the board doesn't have any more questions, we could move. So would, is there, um, if, if the board doesn't have any more questions, we could move forward on the recommended resolution that the Development Variance Permit Application Number 2025-1 for the parcel legally described as Lot 3, Section 2, Township 2, Range 3, Coast District Plan VIP 517831572 Brotham Road, which relaxes the requirement to extend the Haggisburg Community Water System Water Main on Brotham Road along the frontage of the property to service proposed Lot 3 be issued.
Uh, just, uh, Madam Chair, just reviewing what we had decided before, and I think I'm comfortable making a motion for Option 1.
Okay, great. That's the recommended resolution there?
Yep.
Wonderful. So I have a motion from Director Northeast and I'm looking for a seconder. Seconded by Director Harstad. Any further discussion? All in favor? Great. Okay, wonderful. Um, and uh, yeah, thank you for joining us today, Mr. Gunderson. And uh, I hope everything can, can move along with your uh, subdivision uh, in a timely manner.
Okay, I'm sorry. Option number one was to relax the variant?
Yes, that is the recommended motion.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so yeah, the um, that's right. So to issue the permit as presented and attached to this report.
Excellent.
Great. Yeah, thank you for, for joining us today. And um, yeah, I, uh, Mr. Slingerland will, uh, should Mr. Gunderson get in touch with us or should we get in touch with him as far as what the next steps are here?
Madam Chair, we'll, we will uh, send uh, send the good- Sometime next week.
Okay, you, sorry, you froze a little bit there in the middle, I think, unless I did.
My apologies. Madam Chair, we were gonna, we will send the Gundersons a uh, a copy of the permit next week.
Okay, wonderful. That's great. Um, Mr. Gunderson, do you have any questions at all?
No, um, thank you very much, everybody, for your time.
Thank you. Well, see you soon.
Yeah, have a great day.
Take care. You too. Okay, thanks, everybody. Um, next we have 8.4, which is um, a request to approve the work plan and funding for the Marine feasibility study on Denny Island. To this one, do we have any um, questions about this one? Um, would we like Mr. Slingerland to run us through this report?
Well, the, the only thing that I, I see it's, it's calling it a Marina and I, and I, that's not a good name to have on this, on this because it's not necessarily Marina that's gonna compete with uh, with um, you know, private enterprise or whatever. It's, it's to uh, it's to provide a, 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 you know, a barge ramp and, and a boat launch ramp and, and uh, and a, and a, and a, the, the, one of the standard um, small craft harbors uh, floating uh, unload work floats. So, and you know what, and I, and I, when I did put my, my drawing in there, um, I was also trying to get included, you know, some upland lots that connected to the system. And so maybe that, that uh, it, it gave us the opportunity to help pay for, for um, you know, the, the, the barge ramp and the, and the, and the float by being able to um, to sell some lots.
Um, Mr. Slingerland, do you, is there a piece with the, the language that could be changed with this? Or would you like to speak to Mr. Emery's, their Director Emery's question?
Absolutely. So we applied to, to get this grant.
Yep.
Uh, to get this grant, it is an economic development grant, so it needs to have an economic development lens to it. So if we remove the Marina part, then we're no longer eligible for the grant. Uh, or as it won't have that commercial element to it. So there has to be some degree of economic development tied in for, for us to utilize this grant. Uh, we, or it'll have to, then we'd be looking at the feasibility study function, uh, which uh, doesn't have enough funds in it to undertake this work at this time.
Right, right.
It'd be a down-the-road thing. And then if the service was successful, it would have to be repaid back. So it adds a further level of bit of a complication, but um.
Yeah, yeah, so, and, and I could see what you're saying about it. Well, obviously it should be um, financially responsible. Um, and that was, you know, it still, even though there was a boat launch and a, and a barge ramp, that was still, that would still um, have a fee attached to, to using those, right?
Yeah, and we can look, and that's exactly it. It's, it's, is there ways that we can generate, you know, a bit of revenue, get some things moving? Maybe there's a commercial space or kiosk that could be put there. It's not.
Right. Well, that's, I see, I, like, and like I say, on the upland side, that was kind of, that was kind of something that um, that needed to go kind of hand in hand was, is to provide some kind of, you know, um, residential lots is one thing aside, but, but enough area above that, that, you know, a, a commercial um, enterprise could, could ta, could form there in the way of a, of, of a building or, or what have you, that uh, um, um, you know, could have, could have a new, a new store or a new, a new workshop or, or whatever somebody felt like putting in there.
Okay, so um, the way, so it, so how would you want it to be?
I don't know. If we could figure out any other name than a Marina, I, I think, once, once um, you know, if people see Marina, I think they'll get the wrong idea that it's, you know, it's gonna be some huge uh, um, whatever, however you want to say it, a Marina for whatever, which, which a Marina for, for locals wouldn't, isn't, is uh, would be welcome because there isn't uh, any local uh, Marina available as, as in a local Marina that has long-term uh, rentals.
Uh, we can explore changing the name if, if you just tack on that resolution at the end. We'll, uh, we can look like do it.
Okay. Um, other questions or comments? For the feasibility study work plan?
I can give a few quick comments. There's uh, so we're bringing this forward, I'm bringing this forward to um, get the board to approve the scope of work that's there, because then we'll go execute on that scope of work and then uh, bring the final results back. So um, there are a few additional um, optional items. Uh, they are recommended, they're highlighted in red, and they come down to um, doing a engagement with the Healthic Nation for $1,500, $1,500, uh, as well as uh, conducting an in-person community engagement on Denny Island. Um, to get an understanding of the needs of the community and as well including that into the report. Where, if I may give a little blurb on where the community engagement uh, part is going to be important is um, at some point for creating any new service, it has to go to the electors for a new service to be approved. So uh, it's good to tell people early and often, let people think about it, let people have, engage with the material. Uh, so it'll either uh, depending on the size of the service, need to go to referendum or alternative approval process. Uh, by the looks of the service or, or potential costs, it would probably be a referendum service. So uh, as such, it is, it is encouraged and recommended that the board engage in the in-person engagement and keep that dialogue with the community open and uh, and going on.
Okay, so questions about any of the options there? Oh, Director Harstad?
This, this budget of $78,250. Oh, I see. Yeah, okay. So all of that, but even if with the red, um, the red, like the red, if the red items are included, do, is this a grant that's gonna cover all of this, including the red items?
So the grant will cover 80% of it. We're currently uh, in, we've reached out to the province to see if the Growing Communities Fund can cover the additional 20%. So they require a 20% uh, local share. Uh, if it uh, is not able to be covered through the Growing Communities Fund, the feasibility study function has enough funds in it to cover the difference.
Sorry, which fund?
The Feasibility Study Fund. That is a fund that all, all areas put in for feasibility studies. And then uh, if, if utilized, the new service would uh, would eventually pay it back into the general fund. And it's to allow um, you know, support feasibility studies that support new services.
And just out of curiosity, if the, so if the CCRD ended up having to pay the 20%, would that be every area that would incur those costs or, or just uh, Area A?
So every area-
Or A and B?
It would be, uh, so it would be, great, great question. Um, that would come from the feasibility study function. So that is a regional district function that every area pays into and the board sets the amount that gets paid into it every year in the budgeting process. And that builds up a bit of a reserve for these things. So it wouldn't have a taxation impact. It's not something that would hit. If uh, it was a $50,000 bill and we had uh, we only have $18,500 and change in the account, then you may wish to adjust the taxation to do that, that study. But in this case, we have sufficient funds in that account. So if uh, the study's complete, and let's say it meets the needs of Area A, and Area A has a referendum and adopts the service, then we would need to put in place a work with Area A and that budget to have those funds repaid back into the feasibility study account.
I see. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I would um, make a motion that uh, we go for Option 1.
Okay, we have the motion. Oh, go ahead.
I, I, I'm just saying, it, it, it covers um, pretty much all of the bases. And if we need to do something after, then um, then I guess we could look at, at changing the, the outcome later on with more engagement, what have you.
Okay, so that one excludes the in-person and Healthic Nation engagement. So approve the work plan and budget as proposed.
Oh, no, I, well, I kind of, I kind of, I guess I read that wrong. I thought it just got rid of the in-person. I thought the, we, we still need to talk to the Healthic Nation.
Hmm.
We, that's kind of one of the very first things we need to do, or else there's no point in spending any money if, if they're dead set against it or what have you, you know?
Yeah. Is there a way to change the, we, so you'd like the in-person to be changed to online? Or to be like, if we get past the first stages, then we do the in-person engagement? Or would you just want it to be like online engagement or a survey? Or what are you thinking for the engagement?
Well, I'm just thinking the, of the, the Healthic Nation engagement was, was more um, up, up near the beginning. So we don't, we don't actually spend a lot of, of, of money and, and not be able to get anywhere.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Um, so when we look at the work plan there, um, are you kind of thinking that like Phase 3 should be closer to Phase 1?
Well, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that the, the, the Healthic Nation engagement should be more in the Phase 2 and then, and then uh, then do the Phase uh, 3 as it is. If that makes sense.
Okay, um, Mr. Slingerland, is that possible to change it a little bit like that? So that we move the Healthic engagement up to Phase 2?
Uh, I don't, I, we can absolutely request that the contractor move, uh, do the Healthic engagement uh, as early as possible in the process uh, to meet what Director Emery has flagged as a very real can, uh, challenging concern is that if they, if they oppose it, it's pretty difficult to move forward. So uh, we can move that into, uh, request that be moved into Phase 2. Yes.
Okay. Okay, so um-
And, and, oh, sorry, I was just gonna butt in there too. And so something else that's come up in the last little bit is that uh, you know, when we're, when we were trying to get the ferry moved over to um, the other side of the island back when they, they were going to, when they gave us the new ferry dock. And, and they were, um, you know, ferries were complaining about it and, and what have you. But in the background, um, I guess they, you know, either, either rewind enough or, or did whatever. Um, just the, the other week, there was a surveyor showed up and he surveyed the whole road all the way out there and, and surveyed down around old B.C. Packers there and, and uh, because someone is doing a feasibility study.
Oh.
To move the ferry dock over there.
That's interesting. Huh.
Yeah, and, and so if that's the case, maybe there is an opportunity to, to share in something that, that we could have the, the, the barge ramp and the, and the, and the boat launch over on that side. But um, so that's just something that's come up. And whether or not it goes anywhere, who knows?
Right. Worth investigating.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So we are looking at um, moving uh, a, a modified version of Option 2, I guess? Is that for option? So what, it was, it was Option 2, a little bit modified with-
Or I, or we could, or I would say um, we, Option 1, uh, but include the first, the Healthic Nation engagement.
Okay, okay. That sounds good. Um, so yeah, I'm just gonna look for my resolution here. Um, oh, yeah, here we go. So how does that affect the resolution? Um, so we would uh, include, to include, I guess, please, Ms. Harding.
Just to be clear, it sounds like we're doing the-
If you notice on the recommendation that's there, it does actually read that the Board of Directors of the Central Coast Regional District approved the Denny Island Marina Feasibility Study Work Plan as proposed with direction to include optional community on Healthic Nation engagement. So it actually is in that recommendation.
Okay.
It was just worded differently in the option. I did have a quick question. Do we want to include in there um, anything about the staff exploring the change of a study name that still fits with economic development, but does not mention Marina?
Yeah, I think it sounds like we do. Yeah.
Okay, so may I read out a quick?
Yes, please.
Okay. Here we go. Um, Curtis, I wasn't too sure. Do we want to include the bit about the Growing Communities Fund as well?
I, I would leave that to the board. If the board wants to explore having the uh, $17,400, $500 paid for by the uh, Growing Communities Fund, if it's applied, if it, if it is eligible, or if they'd rather that come from the feasibility study function. Either way, we need direction on that. So it might be kind of a two-parter where it's, if it can be uh, paid for by growing communities, we do it.
But, but I'm just gonna, I'll just say it's, it's also Option 1 is $78,250. Um, and it was, it was Option 2 that was gonna make it 87, um, 250.
Yeah.
So if we're-
Okay, everybody. Okay, so it's the in-person engagement, I'm thinking, that makes the difference between those two amounts. So-
And the Healthic, and the Healthic engagement. The Healthic engagement was 1,500 and then the in-person engagement was, was estimated at 7,500. And there was a little, yeah.
Okay, so whatever that amount would be now, I guess.
But I, I, I do wanna maybe throw one other piece in here that feasibility study goes and looks at, is it feasible to do a wharf? And for to, you know, generate funds, they go into the technical side, it looks at the service delivery. It's, it's not something that comes back and forth. The board kind of lets this go. It's not something where we kind of come back and forth and maybe we can tack on a bit here. And these things are, you know, you get your report and sometimes you take part in the service. But there have been other services such as the Denny, uh, the, the, the uh, Townsite Water System where we did a feasibility study. And it was kind of passed on initially, and then a few years later, they picked up that study and, and ran with it and made it work. So um, this isn't something that you're gonna be at the driver's seat on when we, when you say go. It comes out, it gives you a report. Is it feasible? Is it not? Yes or no, kind of. And then here's all the nuances and how to get there. So I just want to caution that when you kind of let this one go, um, you're gonna want all those questions answered. And we can go tack on an extra little bit, but at that point, the, once the cert, the study's closed, the grant's closed, and then you're paying for that community engagement separately.
Right, so do it all together. So, 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 but that brings up another question is, is at what point do we um, uh, have input to shape what this- to shape what this uh, what this um, this physical um, being is gonna look like?
So it would probably come under, they're gonna jump in there and they're gonna start looking at all these things. They're probably, if you want, we can, I can go back to them. And this is where it's really important that we have this dialogue right now. Is we could, I could go back to them and go, hey, look, we should do a board session so they can understand what you're looking for. And that's not included in here. They'll just go away.
And just make up their own stuff.
Well, they'll look at the land, like, it's not like they're going road. They'll look at the land and they'll go, here's the things, the places you could have them. And it will lay out the options sort of thing.
I'm I'm just worried about that these, you know, urban guys, you know, might not have very much experience in the ocean and and how things are normally done. Because everything that we're doing here is is tried and tested and and there's standard uh, designs and and engineering that go with it that has already been done. You just have to ask for it. So we don't need to reinvent the wheel.
But I I think we also have to just be cognizant of what our role is as in, like, as far as governance, like a governance body. Not like in the, you know, actual working part side of it. I don't.
Well, that's where you have to be careful because you can have someone go in there and they could have, you know, come up with something that is uh, custom designed. And it's worth two hundred million dollars instead of having something that that you can do for a for a million dollars, is what I'm getting at. You could design the hell out of something and make it a super nice, excellent thing, but it's not um, normally done as a standard on the coast. And and it would just ends up costing a pile of money and and shoots the project down. That's what I'm getting at.
So I'm I'm wondering if um, you know, like, if if like as far as timelines go, is this something that we want to like, work a little bit on behind the scenes before we bring it back? Or do we need to decide this right right now?
Well, I think we can just, I think we can decide it right now. I just want to be able to make sure that we have a little bit of input of what um, they're actually gonna come up with a design. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Slingerland, what kind of input does the board have on this? Like on the feasibility setting?
It doesn't appear that they're not designing designing this. They're coming back and looking, taking a look at the land. Like when you look at it, they do background research, data compilation, land assessment, Marina market analysis, options, governance, financial analysis, Dania and resident engagement. Um, you've got the Health Sick Engagement. Then they go draft the study, present the study to the board. The board is not involved in the design. This does not do design. This is, can you do it? Where can you do it? And is there support for it? So that you can start looking at us at the next stage, which would be, okay, we're interested. Now we're gonna go design something and then we're gonna go tender something after you've gotten the money for it. So what could, what could be?
Just wait, Steve. Yeah.
Yeah.
What could be added is, and I'm I'm spitballing here if you wanted to do this today, is we could add on another fifteen hundred. And we get a request that they do a bore, a session with the board. They come in, they sit with the board. And they do a workshop with uh, with the board on what is the board wanting to see. And I'm just spitballing fifteen hundred, but it's the same as the Health Sick Engagement. And it would probably be less, but we have them come in and spend an hour or two with the board to hear what the board wants and visions out of this. It's just a solution to kind of bridge that gap a bit.
What do you think about that, Director Emery?
Well, sure, I think that would, that would be good. I just, I'm just, you know, it's it's hard for them to come up with uh, with a um, you know, without some kind of design and whatever and and knowing what what they're, what it, what they plan to build or what have you. Then it's pretty hard to come up with a cost of uh, and and to do all your your, um, you know, you're gonna do a market analyst. But um, you know, if you're trying to figure out what the project might cost, then it, then you you'd sort of need to know what you're building, I think.
I think they'll provide you with a number of ranges and a number of options on what it would cost. And then you you go to the next stage and go if this is something you want. Cause there's a few areas where the feasibility study would really helps. Like if then if let's say the Health sick are not interested. There's a challenge there. If um, the community uh, doesn't support it, there's a challenge there. If you look at some of the land and there's some more challenges around the land placement, there's some challenges there. So it works through and it lays the initial path. Then if you found a place and there's community support and they're willing to pay for it, then you start to get into, now let's look at what we can build based around also what we can afford and what grants are available. So it it's the beginnings of a of a multi-year process.
What do you think, Director Emery?
Yeah, I don't know. It um, it uh, it's one of those things. It's it's something that uh, we definitely lead. Um, you know, as as far as me getting barred out of uh, out of out of sheer water, then that um, you know, having no public access is. And so if you were a um, a businessman trying to do anything on uh, on the island and all of a sudden they just, someone decides, oh, we don't want you. And you just get kicked out. Well, now you have no access to any road or anything like that. So that's why this is very important. So it's just a matter of trying to figure out how to do it and without wasting a pile of money.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So with the options that we do have, like, you know, as a regional district board, how would you like this to proceed today? Or do we want to come back with this? Or what what do you feel like is the best option for right now as far as moving forward with this then?
Well, I just, I don't see there being any any difference if um, you know, I I if I'm, I guess I'm just, I'll be guessing that if they come up with um, you know, the kind of feasibility end of things and the market analyst, then it it depending on the location, that that kind of figure shouldn't change. Like if if they're looking at, oh, what's, what are the number of boats that might use it? And you know, my head, it's not really boats using it. It's 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 people using the facilities that live on Denny Island. You know, between your boat ramp and the barge ramp and and you know, the barge ramp is probably what will get used the 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 most.
Right, yeah.
So so that that doesn't change if it ends up being on some other place on the island. That that kind of information would would still be relevant. So we should probably, we should probably keep going and 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 like I say, try to um, try to keep the I guess, I guess there, I just don't know how this design part works. And maybe there isn't much in it in the in the beginning. But they must have to have some way to to uh, come up with some figures.
Right, and it sounds like, yeah, there'll be a a range of different, different options that we can kind of look at. And if we can get what kind of funding it would be available. And but I guess it's like, looking at what the range might might be on either end of it. I don't know.
Yeah, well, I know that was the other part of that with the map I had sent in, you know, what, it was trying to get some more upland, you know, property that that could help, you know, pay for um, doing the work as well. So it's hard to, you know, unless we can get a big grant to do it, then it'd be hard for for, you know, uh, eighty people to pay for uh, uh, you know, a couple million dollar uh, wharf or 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 ramp, right?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Okay. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Slingerland.
So it sounds like you're getting to uh, getting to some direction for us. Um, just putting another, if you wanted to add on a a board session with the board and I have to run it by them. Cause I I don't know what the cost would be, but I would probably say it'd probably be around the fifteen hundred dollar mark. Um, we could kind of tack that on or request that. Uh, cause I think by the sounds of it, there'd be some value with them sitting down with the, with you and the board to really hear, hear what you, what your vision, what your vision is. And to make sure that gets clearly communicated.
Maybe it's worthwhile to put it off till the next meeting and maybe in between, we could maybe hash that out with the uh, with the, with the uh, the contractor to um, to maybe have a um, a discussion with them.
Yeah, does that work if we uh, defer this and kind of and come back for a next meeting?
So we defer this, it would find out the cost of adding a board, uh, board session to this uh, to this proposal. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, and 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 just to go, and just to go over the 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 the, um, you know, the scope of the of the project itself. And maybe, and maybe try to figure out if we can change that name.
Yeah, right. Okay. So the motion, oh, I I actually, before we go any further, I did notice Director Northeast's hand up. Director Northeast, did you wanna speak?
Uh, yeah, I did. Um, I was just looking, I was just gonna throw out some ideas for uh, the logjam of the obstacles. I really appreciate, I, it's getting late. I'm an hour ahead of you guys here. But anyway, um, I appreciate Director Emery's thoughts on it. Um, I don't feel the need to to weigh in. Uh, first, well, first of all, because what do I know about life out there in Denny Island? And all that. And I think um, uh, Mr. Uh, our C, sorry, our C O has uh, put forward a reasonable solution and I'm perfectly fine with uh, delaying it uh, or yeah, deferring this to the next meeting. Um, and I just would end with this. I think it is wise to get ahead of the whole Marina thing. And if we could, if staff can come up with another name that will allow us to apply into this category, that's a good idea. We don't want to give the business community, whoever they are, uh, the impression that we are going to be competing with them. I'm sure what we want is something that will enhance island life and also complement the development that is already there. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much.
Could I make a motion for deferring this to the next meeting?
Yes, as long as it has a piece about the looking at the a different name for it.
Okay, and and.
And.
And the board session.
And the board session.
And the board session, yeah. Okay, good.
Anything else that we're missing, Ms. Harding?
Would you like me to sort of read out what I've got here?
Sure.
Okay. Um, from what I've pulled together from the bits and pieces, I have that Urban Systems be invited to present at a workshop with the Board of Directors to be sure there is input with the study and that staff explore a change of study name so that it fits with economic development and does not mention Marina. And further, that staff bring the proposal back to the board meeting, the board at the October meeting with updated costs.
That's um, good, yep, okay. So I I think that Director Northeast moved it and um, Director Emery, are you comfortable seconding it?
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Alright.
Great. All right, thanks, you guys. Okay, so that will be, we'll be back uh, before us. Um, next. Next is the um, Outer Coast Commercial General Use Tenure Application. Uh, Mr. Slingerland, can you give us the highlights here?
Absolutely. So we received uh, some land use referrals that came through. And the first one involves the National Outdoor Leadership School. And they're looking for a uh, it looks like they're looking for some more campgrounds for their program that has been going on for quite some time. It did hit some news, so uh, we concluded the news article. Um, just for your reference, that came up. Um, so for the most part, we have no um, O C P or land use bylaws out in that area. So it does present a bit of a challenge. And if we're going to oppose it, that said, if the board has any misgivings about the venture, we can pass on those comments.
Questions, comments?
So I assume the Health Band is is um, weighed in on what they wanna do. Um, and the only thing um, I can say is that um, what am I trying to say? So we have the N M C A, um, well, the National Marine Park that's gonna be established. So um, twenty years might be too long for that because they might, um, it, where they wanna have their their little campsites. Um, it might not be in a um, permitted area in with this new park.
Right, so you'd like to make a comment kind of along, like bringing that to the attention, the marine park piece?
That that there is the the establishment of of a marine park is is uh, is closer. And um, and so the twenty-year deal might not, what might be too long. Like a five-year deal might be a better deal. So if if the zones within this new park um, don't align with what they're doing, then they can be changed.
Good. Um, Director Northeast?
Actually, what I'd like to do is uh, yield the floor to Director Hall. I'd like to hear from, I'd like to hear his perspective on this or any questions he has uh, before I weigh in.
Alright, go ahead, Director Hall.
Yeah, I'm just um, also um, concerned about that. Because I thought through um, was it through Jipra and all those processes, they're supposed to have meaningful engagement with regards to any decisions that are made within a territory. And even for our our office too, I thought that we were implementing engagement pieces already. Now for purposes of relationship development, I just wanna make those comments because it's in the big picture, you know, the engagement with indigenous communities across Canada seems to uh, just have started to drop out of the picture again. Um, that's very concerning. It's very also frustrating uh, when we, while personally, I would work with regional district to try and um, promote uh, working together, you know, all sorts of um, engagement pieces and partnerships. And you know, we throw Jordan's principle into that as well and um, drip on drip and that's one thing, it's been frustrating to try and find out what step they're at and who's still holding the um, the purse strings and the 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 penkeeper on those projects. Um, so I just wanna confirm if we're gonna do anything with regards to this. Just maybe make sure the response to them states that uh, we're, we support it if it, if it's supported by the nation in in their land use plan and their marine use plan, because they've already um, ratified those projects and are up upkeep, updated. Um, the living documents, so they they've scheduled out every five years, that those two documents that were ratified by the community uh, be reviewed as well. I mean, um, nothing is stagnant, things change, uh, opinions change. And the need for, of course, the resources and land and water changes over time too. So wanna make sure those things are covered and uh, maybe um, forward this document over to the Hermer Office. Because they're the penkeepers for those two documents, the marine news plan and the land use plan. So I wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hall. Uh, Director Northeast?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so just to frame this, I think I'm speaking in favor of option one in recognition of the fact that there is really nothing that we can uh, say or do to move this along or prevent it or anything like that. It seems to be a few department levels above our heads. That said, I think that we should vigorously um, when expressing our you know, our following option one is the importance of uh, not just the importance, I can't even begin to stress uh, that, but the meaningful consultation with uh, regional First Nations people. And also uh, somebody, somebody needs to examine the marine use plan. I think it was Director Emery that uh, suggested that, that you wanna make sure there's no conflicts there. Um, I have a question though. Uh, my question is, I, okay, first of all, I understand no permanent buildings. Uh, all sorts of things there, uh, campsites, leadership training and all that. But when, when these sites come online for this organization to use, will that land then be off limits to people outside of that organization? In other words, you and I, um, indigenous people, uh, Indigenous people, uh, tourists, uh, that wasn't clear to me in the, uh, in reading the, uh, the documentation here. If, if it is that case, uh, then I have serious reservations about it for what could that'll do. Uh, about, uh, a non-Canadian entity establishing a foothold on I don't want to sound sentimental, but amazingly beautiful and scenic territory that is, uh, that is a place for, uh, where people traditionally have hunted and gathered, uh, from the land and the sea. Um, and I, and I don't want to, I don't want to be a part of any, anything that would cause us or the First Nations any loss of sovereignty in this territory. So that's my caution. I don't know what to do about it. I say at this point in time, probably the best thing we can, we could do is option one and then express our concerns about, uh, consultation with, um, First Nations and the, um, and the marine use plan. And if there's somebody who's really good with, uh, uh, word warfare, pardon the expression, uh, you know, and, um, a nod to the issue of Canadian and First Nations sovereignty, that, uh, C C R D, well, in my opinion, the C C R D does not want to abdicate or be appear to be on board with abdicating any ounce or any inch of sovereignty to an outside national entity. My, my rant is over.
Okay, thank you. Uh, it sounds like we're, uh, we've got kind of the beginnings of, uh, resolution as along the lines of option one, but bringing those, um, those, um, issues and sentiments to the forefront in that, uh, in that letter in regards to our comments. So, um, I, I think we could probably go ahead and, um, make that, that resolution. Uh, and as Director Hall mentioned, uh, forward the, um, our materials that we received to the Hermed Office to ensure that they are aware and that they have been engaged with as well. And the marine use plan, the marine park plan, to bring that to the attention as well.
Yeah, it's not so much a marine use plan anymore, it's turning into a national park. And then they're going to take some of the, 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 the map, um, program stuff and try to combine it somehow. Um, and to design, design or, I guess, design the, the different zones of this National Marine Park. Um, so, um, I sent, um, Herm a few weeks ago, I sent him the link to this, this whole process and, um, and just to make sure, and I'm, and I'm, I'm sure that they, they, they did receive it already, but, um, but just in case they didn't, I guess. But, uh, so, um, it, so I'm thinking if we did option one, um, and like, um, Director Northeast is worried about is, um, they, in this permitting, they do not have exclusive use of these sites. Uh, but on top of that, I did see a few, uh, chat deals that, that people had been in different areas that they showed up and tried to kick them off of, of said areas as well. And saying that they paid for them and, and nobody else can stay there, which, which is not true, that the existing, um, tenures are not exclusive. So we maybe in option one, we can, uh, we can do the, as it's written and also, um, and also add, um, that they should, uh, it should meet, um, uh, current and future, um, uh, park plans or marine plans.
Yeah, so it sounds like maybe we're closer to option three to write a letter seeking further clarification and outlining concerns. Like, I think maybe we are more along the lines of outlining our concerns than we are. And then also it's consultation and to, you know, to everything that we've talked about in this, this discussion.
I think, I think if we just do something simple and just add a little bit on to option one, um, and send it off because, um, you know, we don't it is, we, we do have the power to, to make a difference that, by, by bringing items up for, uh, the government to, to look at. And if it's, you know, we can put ours in there and it's, and it's something that they should be able to look at. And same whether it could be a, a lot of other people or entities doing the same thing. So if more people say, oh, we, you know, we've got you have to make sure that it's not exclusive use, then, then they can, they, it is wrote in their tenure already, but, but they could make sure that that's not an issue.
Okay. Okay, that sounds good. Um, any other questions or comments from the board? Um, otherwise we can go ahead with the resolution. Okay, um, so I think that we're looking at a modified version of option one. Um, as discussed, um, Ms. Liz Harding, do you have kind of the wording of what we're, we're looking for and the kind of changes that we want to see made?
I did freeze for a blurb. I know that we want to include in there some comments about not exclusive tenure, that it should meet current and future park and marine plans. I, the bit I have, I'm concerned I'm missing is, um, consultation with First Nation.
Right.
Was there anything?
I think we could do the. Well, I think we could just take, um, the, um, um, I, I think we can just take the first option that, that establishes the First Nations commu- uh, communications. And, and we could just add on, uh, the part about meeting the, the, um, the current and future, uh, park, uh, regulations and, um, and the exclusive use to make sure they don't have exclusive use.
Perfect. Got it. Thank you.
There, it's, it's, it's funny, but there's, there is only a few places on the outer coast that you can, you can camp and bring a kayak up on. There isn't very many, that's why they've gone around and picked these actual sites because they're about the only ones you can do this with.
Uh, okay. Okay. Sounds good. So are you ready to make that motion, Director Emery?
I am so.
Okay, great. And a seconder? Seconded by Director Northeast. Any further discussion? All in favor? Great. Thank you very much, you guys. Thank you for the discussion. Um, next is the, uh, telecommunications crowned, Crown Tenure Application Amendment. Um, and, but do we have comments here?
The comment I have is, is, this is strictly going back to these people, uh, City West, not doing any engineering before they got awarded, you know, a big contract to, to establish the, the fiber from Prince Rupert down to Campbell River and around Vancouver Island. And if they had actually done any kind of engineering and study, they would have known where they put the cable in is, is a very rough spot and it keeps getting broken.
I think we just also have to be careful, um, you know, as far as yeah, where, how, yeah, how we're.
Yeah, how you, how we, how we word things and, and so I don't, I don't get in trouble again, but, but it's, but it's. Um, I, and I'm just curious if they, if in this new spot, if they've, um, you know, they've, they've, they've wrote out some stuff here, but, but I just wonder if they, if they know that it's gonna be better than, than where they were.
Okay. Um, da-da-da, so if you had, let's see. That one. Sorry, I'm just catching up here on my screen. So our comment would be like on the, um, on the, sorry, my brain just shut down. Oh, here we go. So that adequate engagement and consult, consultation and that adequate engineering take place or that the like, how would we, yeah, word that, that we want to make sure that this has been tested or researched adequately without, you know, like this, yeah. How, how would you want that to, oh, Director Harstead? Oh, you muted.
That would be my question is, do, yeah, what steps have they taken to, um, come to the conclusion that this would be a better site? And they're not gonna run into the same problems, basically?
Okay.
Yeah.
It is behind the island, so it is, it theoretically is more protected. Is this, and I, and I guess that the part that gets me is this, is, you know, they've already, they've already done this and, and now they're going back to, to, to re, re-engineer and, and try to figure out you know, what they're, what they, what they need to do to make it more reliable. I know they were just in Belaculla and they had a, a, a cable break there that, uh, they just finished fixing and, and, uh, and that's, and that, and that's in a, in a, um, you, you, in, in a spot that doesn't have any weather really in the, in, in the inlet like that, you know? Not compared to Ivory Island, but.
Hmm, yeah. Okay, um, so if we went with option one and added the, like, um, adequate engineering component in a diplomatic way, of course, um, would that be kind of what we'd be looking at?
Sure.
Uh, any other questions or comments on this one? Um, so are, would you like to make a resolution, Director Emery?
I will make the resolution, um, uh, option one, uh, with consultation with the First Nations and adding that, uh, um, sufficient engineering, um, has been done to, um, prove that this is, uh, um, a suitable site.
Great. And I'm looking for a seconder? Seconded by Director Harstead. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Great. Great. Okay. So next we have eight point seven. I feel like this one might be a bit of a longer one. So I'm wondering if we need just a quick little break? And, uh, while I get a pen, so I can write down as we go what's, what our, how our discussion goes, because we've got a lot of options. And, uh, I see that we have, uh, Ms. Helmer on as well, uh, to talk about this next report. So maybe we'll take a, a quick little break, maybe 10 minutes. Would that be okay if we took 10? And, uh, then we will come back with Denny Island Civic Addressing. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, uh, so thank you. In response to the question about the cost recovery, the taxation impacts for the service. If we look at, um, just using the Denny Island Water Service, which is a small service area as an example, that's the only service that the C C R D has with a smaller portion of electoral area A as opposed to the entire area. Um, you could see that it makes, it, it would be, uh, approximately $7.99 if that were the service area per hundred thousand dollars of assessed value. Whereas if you were doing all of electoral area A, it's going to be about a dollar. So i- if you're looking again at doing, let's say you leave the signs out, um, but you're doing a lot, all of the mandatory requirements associated, um, you, you could be looking at a service requisition that, especially in the initial year where you have all your setup costs, your legislative processes. It would be a bit costly if it was, um, a small service area, whereas the difference, if, if you have all of A, you, it's a, a percentage, a small percentage of what it would be otherwise. It's like about seven times di- different or something like that.
So you're saying like, if a house cost, uh, was assessed at 400,000, that would be about 40 bucks if we did all of, all of area A compared to 79 times four, so 300 something dollars, which is, seems expensive, uh, uh, unless I'm doing something wrong.
Um, so in a normal, it, there's a difference between the normal year and the first year. Um, and some of the costs, uh, the board has already been indicating a desire to put under, uh, grant funds, the growing community grant. So if it, if as much as possible is funded there and you're left with the legislative piece and really that service establishment piece, the regulatory bylaw piece, those pieces, none of the grants will cover. Um, I, I did do a look and we couldn't find anywhere we could get those parts funded from. So then you come down to a, a question of whether you want a brochure or not. And if you don't want a brochure, it's 49, 45 for a hundred thousand dollars of assessed value using the Denny Island Service Area for the water service. And it is 823 per hundred thousand of assessed value if it was all of electoral area A. And those are both without doing a brochure, which the board would have the option of whether to do a brochure or not. Um, there's a, a brochure that's recommended further down once things are moving forward, but there's an optional brochure early in the process that the board could decide whether you want to do it or not. Uh, it's costing a couple thousand dollars. So, um, that's, that's kind of the difference between the two. So if you were looking at a $400,000 house instead of a $100,000 house, you're looking at about $200 with the Denny Island Water Service Area, whereas you're looking at about $32 if it was all of electoral area A.
And, and you're saying that's only the first year?
That's only the first year. In subsequent years, um, just as an estimate, it looks like it would be about $8 for the Denny Wild, Denny Island Water Service Area, whereas it would only be about a buck if it was all of A.
Right. Um, and so when you say all of area A, are you including Ocean Falls?
Include, that's including everything and that's simply based on the two quotations that the C C R D had for the cost of the engineers to complete all of the assignment of the address points and so on. And so, um, they quoted for the smaller service area that it was of Denny Island, it was gonna be 15 and for all of A, it was gonna be 20. So if you were, you have the ability to set a different service area if you would like. Any portion, whatever you want in electoral area A could be the service area. Uh, it would be a new service area and we would have to run the math to figure out what would the financial implications of that be? Uh, but that could be done.
So it's, it seems to be kind of a no-brainer that we should do all of area A to spread that cost out and, and, um, and, and then everyone, I, I guess it would be, you know, you're saying in Hunter Island, it would be called, you know, um, number two Hunter Island or something, um, for each lot. And I guess that would be the same. Ocean Falls has, uh, existing road names and existing numbers. Um, and I, I just don't think they've kept up with, um, keeping it or, or it never got put into the, into the B C G I S system um, to be counted. So, so that one is, is a no-brainer too. So it, it, I just don't know if, and maybe Curtis would, would know if, if we can it more or less say that we're gonna do numbering it for them as well and, and if that would be an issue being a improvement district.
Uh, through the chair, I think we can, um, we can reach out to, uh, the improvement district and see if that is a service offered. Um, as, uh, is, the Ocean Falls improvement district offers a number of services, that one? It is offered and is there overlap? If there's not overlap, then that would be something that would fall that, uh, we'd be able to provide and and, uh, it would make sense. And then if there were a need for future addressing, residents would just reach out to us and we'd support them through that addressing exercise.
Right. And, and I, and I believe they don't offer that service because, uh, I sent her, um, I, um, I think I talked about it a, a couple of months ago or whatever, but, um, I did manage to get, uh, um, the, the, the GPS, um, coordinates, um, format that B C ambulance can use. Um, because that had been an issue in the past is, is people give them, um, coordinates, GPS coordinates off a map or what have you and they have no way of entering it into their system. Which seems weird, but. So even in, even in Belaculla, if you're off the road and, and you wanted to get rescued by B C, or you called B C ambulance, you would have to give them the right coordinates in the format, so they would be able to enter that in. But, but back to the numbers, I think, yeah, I think we should, uh, do as much of area A. But, but back to the numbers, I think, yeah, I think we should, uh, um, do as much of Area A as we can and then that would just, um, help everyone for, for, um, either services or rescuing or what have you.
Okay. Okay, so would you like to proceed to the options or, um, how would you like to proceed?
Sure, let's go to the options.
Okay, um, thank you. So it sounds like, uh, in the service area section, uh, you're leaning towards, uh, the entire Electoral Area A and we'll have a conversation with Ocean Falls before that's brought back to the board. Uh, for a service establishment bylaw, that's a legislative process that's required to set up the service and there's no funding for it. Uh, the elector approval process, it's recommended that we go with an alternative approval process because that's the most efficient for this particular type of bylaw and less costly and, uh, less of an administrative burden, quicker. Uh, brochure newsletter, that's fully at the discretion of the board and the board also has the ability as a newsletter to fund it from general government or fund it from the feasibility study, which would then, if the service is established, it will fall back to the new service area and if Area A is the full, is the service area, Area A would pay for that cost. If it doesn't succeed, then it falls back to general government anyway. Uh, so you have a choice there of either directing the staff, do a newsletter early in the process or not. And if it's not done early in the process, once the services, uh, assuming the, the AAP is successful, then once the service is moving forward, then there would be a brochure newsletter that would go out to everyone to say, hey, here's what the CCR is do, is doing, here's why it's being done, here's what, uh, the benefits and impacts are and here's what's expected of you. So that would go out regardless of any of the other options that you might choose. Uh, the regular, sorry.
I was just gonna, uh, just gonna say that, yeah, I think, uh, a brochure in, in the first place, um, probably isn't warranted, but, uh, when in the AAP process, then, then they would, the, the, the property owners would, would be informed of what was going on with their question of, if they would like the local service area or not.
Yes, the, during the AAP, the CCRD would follow the public notice, uh, how, how it's normally done in that bylaw. So they would, uh, do the posting of the information in that format. It wouldn't be like an individual newsletter mailout, it would be the formal public notice requirements. And, uh, then assuming the AAP is successful, then that's when the more detailed information would follow later on.
Right.
Okay. Um, the regulatory bylaw, it says, the, CCRD already has one for the Belaculla Valley, so it would be a similar idea, um, with the variation that some people being only water access are going to be told to put their signage where it's visible from the water as opposed to fronting a road. And, um, it tells you how big the signage, that it should be clearly legible and that kind of thing. So it just provides some parameters and that's required as part of the, the house numbering, uh, how it's set up in the Local Government Act is by a regulatory bylaw and a service establishment bylaw, that's how civic addressing works. Um, the engineering work for all of A, it was quoted at the twenty thousand dollar mark. And, uh, so it's a little bit more there, um, but it's eligible for the grant fund and all of the associated costs with that are also eligible for the Growing Community Grant, so that could be recovered from there. But, uh, the resolution that's currently in place would not be a sufficient amount of funds to cover the full costs associated with all of, uh, all of that work. So there'd be a need for, um, as we come further down, there'd be a need for a, a different number value to cover that. Um, the signage, you were saying, let's let the people do their own sign, which is the second column, number five. We'll just let them know what that, what's involved and what they should do, so there'd be some communication costs associated there. And then, um, and then that information would be sent out to the, uh, to the property owners.
Right, and, and so, um, something that was brought up, uh, in our discussions of the chamber, uh, was some people, um, would like an opportunity to, and maybe this is the opportunity, is to, uh, change some road names on Denny Island to, to better match what, um, what, what the community is right now. Um, you know, Shearwater Road goes right through the whole place, but then there's no Shearwater Road um, in Shearwater itself, which, which probably should have the name Shearwater Road in, in Shearwater to keep things a little bit straighter. Um, and there's, and there's some, there's some road, road, um, right-ofways, surveyed right-ofways that, that some don't have roads and some have partial roads that, that people would like names for those as well.
Yes, so there, there could be, um, some collaboration with the Ministry of Transportation. They've got, I think there's four official road names on Denny Island. Um, I'm not sure about the rest of Area A, but, uh, wherever there are MOTI roads, we would, we could deal with them. If it's a right-ofway, then we have to deal with, let's say it's Hydro's right-ofway or whoever the authority is, we'd have to have a, a conversation with them. If it's a forestry road, then it's going to be with the Ministry of Forest People instead of transportation. So there's, there's some different pieces there.
It, it, they're, uh, the, all of the, all of the road right-ofways are all, uh, MOTI's right-ofways. They just, they just didn't follow their own rules while they built, when they built the subdivision and provide public access. They did, they, and, and they did at least survey for the road, but didn't build it in the end. So it is, it is all MOTI, but, but not built.
Hmm, okay. Um, so, uh, in terms of the naming of the roads, the ones that are right-ofways that aren't named, we'd, we'd have to have some conversation with them if they're transportations. And then, um, if people are looking to change the name, that's really, um, I, I guess it's kind of an advocacy piece if the CCRD wants to put forward something on behalf of the community. We haven't built a component into this about changing road names. Uh, so that's maybe something we'd have to look at separately. Um, if the CCRD wants to play an advocacy role on behalf of the community of Denny Island or any other parts of Area A, uh, to get some name changes. I see CAO Slingerland has his hand up.
Thank you. I think that was a previous option in a previous board decision when it came down to the different options for the, uh, Denny Island Addressing. One of them was in-person engagement to discuss, uh, uh, road naming options and conventions. Uh, we can bring that option back if you like, if that would help.
Uh, and, and maybe not in person, but we could, you know, uh, we could, um, through, through the chamber, maybe, um, uh, uh, come up with, uh, uh, some changes that they, that they want to see, the locals want to see.
Would you like us to get a price and return to the board?
Sure, yes, that would be, that would be good. So there's, so there would be, um, there would be three unnamed roads that would need names and I think one road, um, to be changed.
And we'll, I'll come back with options.
Great.
So what do we have to do here now?
Uh, so if we move down to the recommendations, there's a number of board decision points. Um, for the first, a- and I've just done them alphabetized to kind of provide a little bit of structure for walking through it. The first thing is we need to know the service area. You've kind of indicated that verbally, but the board could pass a resolution for the service area.
Okay, would you, Steve, would you like to, so I'm hearing, um, the entire, uh, Area A with conversations with Ocean Falls about their, uh, Improvement District service, whether that's a thing? Would you like to make that resolution?
And, and I, and I guess, and I guess we wouldn't include a, a Wiccanoe because they, they would, like Bella Bella would have their own street names and addressing?
Uh, so if it's, if it's under the jurisdiction of a First Nation as opposed to the jurisdiction of the CCRD, they would, they would do their own thing.
Right, okay. Then, then we can, then we could make a motion to, um, um, uh, uh, I don't know where we're going to do, engine work, uh, engineer work on the.
I think it would be this, this one here modified.
Right, okay.
Yeah. The, the service area for civic addressing and electoral A be confirmed as including all of Electoral A and then we're going to add that Ocean Falls piece? Is that what you want to do, Steve?
Sure, um, you, I, I, I don't even know if we have to mention Ocean Falls, other than that we would, I guess we would have to, um, I guess we would have to ask them if they, if they would like to, to join in on this.
Okay, so to correspond with them, I guess.
Right.
Okay, okay, so, um, would you like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Director Emery and a seconder?
Sorry, just, uh, could I interject here?
Yeah, of course.
Or maybe, um, seeking support of Herman and the elders regarding naming new streets, because one of the reserves was actually where the, where Shearwater is now, before it was an army base. So it wasn't a reserve, it was a village site. Maybe some.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have, we have the, the motion, maybe what I'll ask for is a seconder and then amend, uh, like we could do an amendment maybe to the motion or something like that, okay?
That's the process. Thank you.
No worries, I'm, I'm like figuring it out as I go. So, uh, are you willing to make, to second that motion so that we can do that amendment, Director Hall?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so seconded by Director Hall, um, I'm hearing an amendment by Director Hall to, um, have, yeah, consultation with, with Hermed and what was the rest of it, Director Hall?
I was Hermed and, um, the language speakers, the, the elders would like to probably share some memories of, um, their, our, our great-grandparents who had lived there and whatnot, so, yeah.
Okay, um, so now I, I have that amendment, so now do I need, uh, seconder for the amendment? Seconded by Director Northeast, and now we vote on the amendment, is this right? Thank you for your patience, everyone, while I do this. Okay, so all in favor of the amendment? Yes, okay, great. Now we vote on the resolution? Yeah, okay.
Nailed it.
Yes.
Good job, good job.
Thank you. Uh, okay, so all in favor?
Right.
Great, okay, thank you. Okay, so that's the first one. We cut through one, one option, okay, great.
Okay, very good. So the next one is the service establishment bylaw, which is just drafting the service establishment bylaw for the board's consideration.
Okay, so I'm looking for that resolution. Moved by Director Emery and a seconder?
Sure.
Seconded by Director Northeast, uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Great. And now the, oh, sorry, go ahead, um, Ms. Helmer.
Yep, that's okay, Chair, if you want to just do it, I, I'm happy to support it, whatever works. But I was just going to head down to number, uh, section C, the elector approval process, which is recommended to be an AAP.
Perfect, if, um, if the board is comfortable, I'm just looking for a resolution.
Yeah, I would make that resolution.
Moved by Director Emery and a seconder, Director Northeast, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hey.
Great. All right.
Okay, so the next one is the brochure or newsletter, whether to issue one or not. Based on the earlier, uh, discussion, it sounds like Director Emery was leaning towards this, uh, let's just follow the public notice requirements.
Hmm.
Okay, Director Emery, would you like to make that motion?
I would make that motion that we don't send a, a pre, uh, brochure out to everyone.
Okay, moved by Director Emery and a seconder? Seconded by Director Harstead, any further discussion? All in favor? Great.
Okay, the next one is the regulatory bylaw under E.
Perfect. Um, so I'm looking for that motion. The regulatory bylaw.
Oh, here, I thought I already did that one.
Oh, that was the, that was.
Oh, service, the service establishment bylaw.
Yeah, that's right.
Now we have the regulatory bylaw. I'll put my hand up for that too.
Okay, thank you, Director Emery, and a seconder. Seconded by, oh, I thought maybe Director Northeast was seconding, but maybe he was just turning a light on, okay? Seconded by Director Northeast, any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Great. All right.
Okay, uh, the, the next part, the engineering work, there's three different, uh, options here, but the one that, based on establishing the service area as Area A, it would be the second one, the middle one in section F that would be applicable.
Okay.
The engineering costs related to the civic addressing project for all of Area A, that one?
That one.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, make the motion on that one.
Moved by Director Emery and a seconder? Seconded by Director Harstead, any further discussion? Oh, sorry, Steve, what?
No, um, I was just a second, but I was.
Oh, sorry. Uh, all in favor? Great.
Okay. Then we come down to the signs and if the intent is to, to not, um, do the signs, uh, on behalf of the public and let them do their own signs, then we would just simply inform them of the signage requirements and, uh, give them some direction on where to place their signage and what was, what, what's involved in that, which is the very first under G civic address signs. And then also at the, you could skip all the middle ones and then at the very end, there's informing the property owners of the civic addressing project along with its benefits and related requirements. So you might simply want to take this first bullet and tie it up with the second bullet into a single resolution.
Sure, let's, let's do that and, and, um, what, you know, would there, I wonder what the, what the cost would be if, if the CCRD, um, could, if somebody wanted signs, if, if the CCRD could take orders? If that's something that could happen or, or is that just weird?
Um, some, some regional districts do that. If they do, they typically at the beginning get the signs for the people and then it's when there's a subdivision, they say it could be available and they charge a fee for it at that point. And generally, if the regional district orders the signs, there's a fee. But the, the additional complication for
Yeah, not worth it.
CCRD is getting it over to the remote areas.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we just, and we, that was something I was going to bring up, um, later as well about, about, uh, you know, organizing how to get things over at, at those, those, uh, those, um, um, composting, um, bins were a little bit, uh, weird, so we can talk about that at some other point. But, um, yeah, so, okay, I would make the motion that we combine those two bullets and, um, and I think that would be, it would make me happy then.
Okay, good, I see, yeah. As long as you're happy, Ms. Harde, give us your hand there.
Uh, so just so I am clear, we're going with option one and then what, what are we tacking on to it?
The very end one that the CCRD would, uh, proceed with informing property owners of the civic addressing project along with its benefits and related requirements.
Perfect.
Uh, so that would be the after, the after it got passed and whatever, I guess.
Thank you.
Okay, beauty. So it's moved by Director Emery and a seconder? Seconded by Director Harstead, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none? All right. Okay, so that's civic address signs. The next part is the road naming, it's simply the.
Okay, so that's civic address signs, the next part is the road naming, it's simply the collaboration piece about the road names, and if there are any concerns about street signs or traffic signs in the service area, those could be also communicated along at the same time, and if there are any other parties that need to be communicated, either for roads or water access, that would be, uh, part of that element as well.
Okay.
Travis could add, Travis could add a little bit on there about talking to the, to the nation. In that section, if there, if there's roads going to be renamed.
Okay, so we'll add that, that piece there to talk to Hermed and the language office, is that what?
I su- I support Emery's suggestion.
Great. Okay, so is that a, is that a motion?
That's a motion, yeah.
Okay, so moved by Director Emery, seconded by Director Hall. Perfect, any, uh, all in favor? Great, okay.
Okay, so then we come down to the funding, the optional piece was a no. And, um, so we need to figure out the amount for the growing community funds. The legislative processes are estimated, that's the second bullet here, to be about $6,000. They would have to be covered from the service if it's established, if it's not, it always falls to general government with any service establishment process, that's the way the Local Government Act is set up, so that somebody has to foot that bill. Generally, the service has to, but if there is no service, then it goes there. For, sorry?
Oh, I was just saying, okay, sorry.
Okay, and, uh, the part here, we'll have to figure out the math and just go up to the table that summarizes all the costs and, um. Uh, look at the ones that have GCF, so we've got $20,000 plus the three, that's 23. We're skipping all of that except the two, which is also eligible, so that's 25. And we've got the multi-piece, so that's 26. Um, so that would put the resolution amount at 26. The one cautionary note I would give you is that we'll have to come back to you with, um. If any additional costs that might be associated for the public engagement process. Um, and, uh, if, depending on what, what the discussions are with Ocean Falls. There, there, there could be a couple variables that could change that 26,000 number.
Hopefully, Ocean Falls, I think, would be, you know, if they agreed to, it'll be fairly easy, because that, like I say, they already had numbers and, and street names, uh, to begin with.
Yeah, for sure, but I, 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 and I expect that the engineers would have taken that into account in the quotation that they provided. But, um, I haven't had, uh, direct communication with them as of this point, so I don't know if there would be any impacts there.
Hey, so the, the resolution that we would be looking for would be, um. Would be Growing Communities Fund be allocated to the civic addressing project in electoral area A up to 26,000? Is that what we, the number we came to?
Yep.
Yeah. The board can choose, oh, sorry, just reading that out, that's.
So is that?
Yes.
What? That would be correct, sorry, Chair, there's just some information there for you.
Okay, no problems, yeah, the board can choose to fund as much as possible from the Growing Communities Fund, or can choose to fund it from the proposed service if it proceeds, okay, yeah, so, um. All, so.
I'd make the motion.
Moved by Director Emery, perfect, and a seconder?
Oh. Lights on now, I'll say.
Oh, a seconded by Director Hall? Great, any, uh, further discussion? All in favor? All right, great.
Okay, so just to clarify, did this part here about the cost, cost not eligible for GCF estimated to be $6,000? Um, let's go down to the recommendation part.
So, so that $6,000 would be the reason that the first year would be higher than, than the year after?
Exactly, that's those bylaws and your elector approval process.
Is there a way to, to, um, borrow money to, to, to split it over two years? Or not worthwhile?
Not, not really, um, if some of the costs end up landing in a subsequent year, then it would. There's the potential timing wise that you could make it straddle two years. Um, but you need the service established.
Yeah.
Which really. You can't recover from the service until it's established, so it's not really viable to split it up.
Yeah, and it's, and it's not a huge amount of money. Is that something that we needed to, to vote on or to make a motion?
Um, I, I think that that's included under I funding.
Okay, good.
Yes, the, the two bullets that are there cover that, it, I was just clarifying that that was the intent. Okay. Um, then, uh, the time, the, my apologies, it, none of the attachments to the report seem to have made it onto the agenda, um, so you don't have a picture of the timeline. I could pop it up there quickly, just so you could see what it is. It, it just lays out the process involved, the notices, the elected response period, the deadline for response, coming back to the board, waiting for municipal affairs to approve it, all of that's in there, your regulatory bylaw, the engineering work, um, collaborating about road names, sending the information off to B C Assessment, doing the signage if we were to do that, and wrapping up the project, which brings us out to almost a year later in the process, um, but there's, there's a few variables in there. So that was, uh, the point of, um, in the staff report was to say. Uh, oh, I wanted to share it here, using the one off the board agenda, to say that, uh, we would bring back an updated timeline, because you haven't actually reviewed it today, when the matter is brought back before you, staff can simply include that, if that's satisfactory for you. And then we wouldn't need to, your resolution, we'll just make sure we do that for you.
Okay.
Sure.
And, and this, the cost recovery, um, this last one is simply just saying, we'll go away, we'll do the work we have to do to meet your requirements, we'll bring back that Service Establishment Bylaw, and at that time, we're looking for your direction to simply give you the updated costing. For the taxpayer.
Okay, so do, and do we need to make that resolution as well then, or is that one kind of implied?
Well, because you don't have, you don't have the bylaws attached, you don't have some of that information. I think we could do the same thing as the timeline, if you're comfortable with that, is we'll just make sure that these two elements are included on your next board report.
Okay, is everybody comfortable with that? I'm hearing, yes, by silence. Okay, great, yes.
That brings us to the end, thank you very.
Wonderful, thank you, that was, that, that was much less painful than I thought, I thought, like, that was, thank you for walking us through that, that was, yeah, what, very organized, very well done. Thank you, um, okay, perfect, so, uh, we are moving right along to bylaws and policies. Um, so the updated, yay, um, the updated, uh, election bylaw has returned before us, and, um, how do we feel about it? Uh, we have, uh, we just changed the Thai piece, I believe, there haven't been a lot of changes. Uh, Mr. Slingerland, is, do you want to speak to this at all?
Uh, I'd actually get, uh, um, our deputy corporate officer to, uh, to speak to it, is this, is her? As this is, uh, her project, but, uh, yeah, if, uh, Ms. Stad, if you want to jump in.
I can't find my own microphone, it's okay. Uh, the, another, very many changes made to it, it was literally just the, uh. The Thai voting, rather than having to run another election, it would just be done by law instead, and then there were. I think that was it. They made a bit of small housekeeping with some. Order changes, but that was about it.
Yeah, and this one came before us, um, when was it, it was last, was it the last meeting, or, yeah? So we have, we have looked at this one before, um, does the board have any questions or comments? No? It's one of those decisions that you make that you never think are going to affect you until it does in the next election cycle, which is what happened after we added the Thai piece in there. Um, so I am looking for, um. The resolution that Election and Assent Voting Bylaw Number 550 2025 be read a first, second, and third time. And I see Director Northeast moving that, I'm looking for a seconder.
A second.
Seconded by Director Hall, any further discussion? All in favor? Great. Okay, thank you very much. So now I'm looking for the resolution that Election Assent Bylaw Number 550 2025 be adopted. Um, is it you, yeah, be adopted.
Move.
Moved, moved by Director Hall and a seconder, seconded by Director Northeast, any further discussion? All in favor? Great, okay, so next is, um, our, this is 11.2, Solid Waste Management and Recycling Conversion Service Establishment Bylaw Number 554. So, um, now this one is, um, Ms. Bian, can you give us an overview of this bylaw? And I just also have a, a note that we should consider up to three readings, um, but delay, maybe delay adoption. But maybe I'll get you to, to, uh, run this one through for us.
Sure, from my chair, um. So, um, the regional district have ability to increase the maximum annual tax ceiling uh, by up to 25% without, uh, inspector approval. If there hasn't been, um, increase in taxation and the, uh, tax ceiling in previous five years. So the last board meeting, um, F23, the requisition limit increase policy was presented to the board. The idea was, uh, that, uh, the policy was just to guide the review and potential increases of the, uh, maximum tax requisition limit. When service, uh, as it reached 75% of a secure and, uh, maximum tax ceiling. And also that limit has not amended in the past five years. This review is a, uh, intent to ensure, uh, financial stability, uh, and adequate service levels. So per the policy, uh, the review was done, uh, of each service tax requisition. And as a result, um, we bring forward as a recommendation to amend, uh, solid waste management uh, and recycle, recycling conversion service establishment by law to increase, uh, the maximum requisition, uh, for the service by 25%. Um, this solid waste management service, uh, established in 2011. And since then, uh, the tax requisition has not been increased, uh, for 14 years. And the base on the, uh, Q on taxation, uh, 183,925 uh, is reached 83% of the maximum taxation at the moment. Uh, but increasing this tax requisition, uh, as we presented last board meeting, uh, does not mean that the CCRD would have, uh, any intention or requisition to the maximum amount. Uh, this is actually just have, uh, give us ability for the board to consider to increase up to the maximum level. However, the actual amount of tax requisition will still be considered and decided upon annually uh, as a part of the annual budget process, which is, uh, in power by the board. Uh, any questions? So the proposed amendment would be, uh, increased by 25%. So at the moment, Q on bylaw speak to $1 for, uh, 1,000 of net taxable value in land improvements. So the maximum taxation at the moment is 220,244 dollars. And based on the Q and estimate, uh, this assessment data in 2025, the prob- proposed amendment, uh, the maximum taxation would be, uh, increased up to 277,555. $554, sorry. But this is nothing to do with, uh, annual taxation at all, this is just to, for the board to have ability to set tax requisition limit.
Yeah. Yes, um, any questions from the board? I know that this one did come, uh, before us a few meetings ago as well, um. And so I think that we have, yeah, more clarification on, you know, what is, what is being asked now, um. But yeah, if the board, yeah, has questions, oh, Director Harsad, do you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I was just wondering if, um, does it, like, are we looking at potentially 20, in 2026, increase, like, actually increasing it? Because this is just give, I'm understanding this is giving this the, the ability to increase it, not that we're necessarily going to increase it, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, the taxation, uh, is, hasn't discussed anything, so it will bring forward from the next board meeting, the board start to consider it, uh, each services getting into the budget discussion. Um, and that's a taxation through the double resolution through the budget process, so this is nothing to do with, uh, actual taxation component. Uh, whatsoever, yeah.
So if, so if we agree to this, it, it's not going to have any taxation impact right now, but it could in the future.
Yes, this is just in case in the future we run into problem where we need to increase. Then the future board would have more ability to have a room to consider as options. So it just prone to update it as we go to, for the future needs and growth, but it doesn't mean that, uh, is, is nothing to do with actual taxation increase. So this is just to give the board ability to get there if they need it in the future.
And the reason we, um, might not adopt this today, because I was, had that same thought myself, uh, is to do with, um. I see a paragraph here, consent on behalf of the electors must be provided in writing by the Electoral Area Director C D and E pursuant to section 347 and 349 of the Local Government Act, before the bylaw can be approved?
Uh, yes, that's correct, um.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how, it looks like we're dealing with a couple bylaws here. Changes like some just, just, uh, you know, completely deleting bylaws. Existing bylaws and are, maybe we're not even there yet. But anyway.
Which? Which? Um, sorry, if I'm not.
Sure, no worries, uh, so, oh, maybe I'm, wait, I might be on the wrong spot here just a minute.
Oh. If, if I may, if I may, uh, Director Harsad has, I think, and I may, uh, Ms. Stad can jump in. Uh, there was a little bit of what repealing, uh, some bylaws that was just housekeeping uh, on the election repeal bylaw, as we had, uh, uh, I think it was in more of administrative air sort of thing, uh, around a previous repeal, so it was included in the bylaw.
Oh, I see.
It, it was, it was still a valid repeal, but we've gotten some, uh, some residents have expressed, um, frustration over the wording. So it was, uh, it was a valid repeal when it was done, but we've included it in here, just as a bit of housekeeping, um, to do it. So, uh, that was the, the previous one on the election set of things. Uh, did I get anything wrong, Ms. Ms. Stad?
Yeah, no, that was perfectly right, it was just a, could, that was a clarification that all previous election bylaws were repealed, and this is going to be the new bylaw.
Right. Go ahead.
And just to confirm, because it talks about, um.
this new amount, the 125,400,000 gets in, like, is annually, like, every single year, so, but can, can you confirm that the, the, I think you were saying the board still has the ability to look at that and make changes each year?
Yes, that's, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? I'm not hearing any. So we are looking for a resolution that solid waste management and recycling conversion and service establishment amendment bylaw number 554 be read a first, second, and third time. We, I mean, alternatively, we could not, we could. But, but I think that we, you know, that when it comes to budget season, we are getting very close to our maximum requisition. I don't think we have any big plans to increase taxation significantly, but we are getting really close to the end of that runway. So if we don't amend this bylaw, then we are kind of getting ourselves into a spot where we won't have the ability to to increase it if we need to. But, I mean, I guess we don't have to ask this right now, if we're, if the board doesn't have the appetite to. Okay, so we are going to move along. I'm not getting a mover on this resolution, so we will move right along. So next is 11.3, so this is policy F20, so, oh, policy F20, there, oh, there were changes requested. So the update is in front of us. Would anyone? Does anybody have any questions or comments, or is anyone ready to make the motion, the recommended motion that F20, the budget engagement preparation policy be accepted as presented? Director Northeast moves? And a seconder? Seconded by Director Emery, all in favor? Great. Okay, thank you very much, everybody. The last section is the correspondence. Does anybody have anything they'd like to discuss in the correspondence section that they'd like to, to pull out and discuss there? All right. I am hearing none, so now I just, we're going to move into the closed portion of our meeting. I'm looking for a motion to close the meeting for the purpose of consideration of items that fall under section 90, subsections 1, E, and J, and 2B.
Move.
Moved by Director Hall and a seconder? Seconded by Director Harsad, all in favor?
Right.
Great.